You're doing Zoom if you would like to make a public comment or ask a question during the public comment phase, then you just need to use the raise a hand feature. You can also watch the towns' meetings on their YouTube channel, but you're not able to, all of the live stream comments are disabled during that. So let's go ahead and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
At Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Commissioner Kelly?
Here.
Commissioner Hogan?
Here.
Vice Chair London?
Here.
And then we have some ceremonial matters, so who do I hand that one off to? To you, Carol?
Just for folks in the audience, Ryan DiMartini was appointed by Councilmember Jenny Nysley to serve on the Planning Commission because her appointee resigned because he moved.
Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and I'm going to read, I was told last time I did way too much at one time, so, and then you're just going to repeat after me, so if you could just raise your right hand. For the Office of Planning Commissioner,
For the Office of Planning Commissioner,
I, Ryan DiMartini, do solemnly swear,
I, Ryan DiMartini, do solemnly swear,
that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States,
Will support and defend the Constitution of the United States,
and the Constitution of the State of California,
And the Constitution of the State of California,
against all enemies, foreign and domestic,
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic,
that I will bear true faith and allegiance,
That I will bear true faith and allegiance,
to the Constitution of the United States,
To the Constitution of the United States,
and the Constitution of the State of California,
And the Constitution of the State of California,
that I take this obligation freely,
That I take this obligation freely,
without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion,
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion,
and that I will well and faithfully,
I will well and faithfully,
discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
So we'll go ahead and open up for public comment for items that are not on the agenda. We have anybody? Is there anybody on Zoom?
Yes, we have one person on Zoom. Pam, you're unmuted.
Oh, can you hear me?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I was looking at the planning report, so I'm inquiring about the status of the Loomis RV campground that Jared Taylor put in. I'm noticing that it was originally received on February 21st of 2021, and there was meant, at least two meetings that was quite vocal with the town folks that were, that spoke out against this, and I'm seeing that on September 20th, that we're waiting for pending applicant directions. So I'm wondering what exact, what exactly are we waiting for? The November and December meetings were canceled, and I know for a fact that one of the newly appointed persons, person is in favor of this RV campground, so this may be a little early on this, but I know for a fact that the person is for the RV campground, so I'm just wondering, you know, what the status is? Is it going to be brought up again next month? Are we waiting for March when we have a full, you know, five people onboard? So I'm not sure if someone can answer that, you know, question tonight, but it's been, you know, pending for quite a while, so if there's anything that you could tell me now, that would be great. If not, you know, I'll just keep attending the meetings and stuff. So a lot of the town folk again spoke out against that, and including, you know, myself, so, and I've lived here for 38 years and I'm not going anywhere, so, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you, Pam. Did Steph want to respond in any way?
Yes, I can respond to that. So as Pam mentioned, it was brought forward earlier, but we're still in that holding pattern, waiting for the applicant to provide direction on what he would like to do. So there's nothing new to report, it's still pending.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Nope, okay. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
I so move.
I second.
Can we get a roll call? Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Hogan?
Yes.
Commissioner DiMartini?
Yes.
Vice Chair London? And then let's go ahead and open up for public comment on the consent agenda. Do we have any on Zoom?
None.
Nope. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I so move.
I second.
Roll call. Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Hogan?
Yes.
Commissioner DiMartini?
Yes.
Vice Chair London? Yes. Okay, and so we will go ahead and begin the public hearing on the Sierra College Boulevard Widening Project, initial study mitigated negative declaration, and I'll turn it over to Steph.
Great, thank you. Merrill Buck, Town Engineer. So, we're getting real close to being able to bid the Sierra College Widening Project. This is going to take Sierra College from Brace to Taylor and widen out from four lanes to six. There'll be bike lanes and sidewalks, and as part of that project, there's the need to do a CEQA document. So back in 2019, we started the design, and in conjunction with that, Area West was hired to do the environmental documents. Amy Duer Smith is here tonight, and she's going to step us through the initial study mitigated neg deck that's required to be adopted as a recommendation to council before we can proceed with the project, so. Turn it over to Amy, thank you.
Sure. Thank you for having me here, Commissioners. As Merrill mentioned, a initial study mitigated negative declaration in compliance with CEQA was circulated December 2019 to January 2020 for the widening of Sierra College Boulevard from Brace to Taylor. That widening does dovetail into the improvements that the Costco is making on Sierra College Boulevard as well, and this project is in part mitigation for the traffic impacts of the Costco. That initial study, most of the project impacts associated with this widening are construction-related impacts, pretty standard impacts associated with a widening. Some of the identified impacts that are potentially significant, for which we identified mitigation measures to reduce that impact, include an air quality impact, which requires, as you guys probably know around here, there's a lot of naturally occurring asbestos, which can be a hazard during construction for workers and people in the area. So there is a requirement that the contractor do some soil testing before they begin the work, and should, we don't expect those levels to be that high, but should they reach a high level, there is a requirement for special safety procedures when you're dealing with soils with have, that have that additional asbestos. So that's one of the impacts. The main impacts really are biological resources. There's an intermittent stream that crosses under Sierra College Boulevard, just south of Taylor Road, and that stream is tributary to Sucker Ravine. It has a lot of riparian vegetation along it, and by widening the road, we need to widen the culvert, so we're going to be taking out some trees. There's also a small area of seasonal wetland, that's kind of where the Homewood lumber was, kind of between the road and the Homewood lumber parking lot, so that also due to widening needs to be removed and essentially culverted. So the kinds of mitigations to offset those impacts on biological resources include some standard pre-construction nesting bird surveys, and to make sure that there's no birds nesting in those trees when we take them out. We also have some tree replanting that's required, and we are negotiating the permit terms with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, California Department of Fish and Wildlife, and the Regional Water Quality Control Board right now, as, right now, we're negotiating with them on those permit terms for any other compensatory mitigation they will require to offset the loss of those wetlands and waters. So that's a, no net loss is the goal for wetlands and waters, so we're working with them on how to make that happen. That's also part of our mitigation plan. And then the last area I just want to touch on is cultural resources and tribal cultural resources. We had a pretty active AB 52, if you're familiar with the CEQA requirement, that we consult with tribal representatives during the course of planning a project, so I want to let you guys know that did happen. We heard from two tribes, Shingle Springs and UAIC, the United Auburn Indian Community. We had a meeting onsite with UAIC representatives. We provided them with our proposed mitigation measures before we even issued the initial study, so this all happened back in, I think it was, it was August of 2019 that we had those meetings, and came to a resolution on how to address potentially found resources. There are no known resources at this site, but there are some known resources in nearby waterways, near nearby waterways. So should anything be discovered during construction, there are standard procedures for how to address cultural resources if they're unearthed inadvertently during construction. So that's pretty much the summary of the impacts and mitigation measures that were recommended during, in the initial study mitigated neg deck that was circulated for those required 30-day circulation period. During the circulation, we only received three comment letters, and that was from the California Department of Toxic Substances Control, Caltrans, and the Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board. So DTSC, which is the Department of Toxic Substances Control, kind of sent a pretty standard letter that they send a lot of the time for making sure that we address things like the naturally occurring asbestos, the potential for lead-based paint in traffic striping, and early deposited lead along the road. All of those conditions are taken care of with our standard specifications that are part of the construction bid. So there were no changes to the initial study that were required as part of that letter. The Regional Water Quality Control Board sends the same letter to everybody in the state, I think. So it's really just a form letter saying, if your project will do this, these are the permits that are required. So there was really nothing to respond to, it wasn't very project-specific, but we are working with them on the Clean Water Act 401 permit application that went to them in November, I think it was, or, yeah, I think it was November, so we're hoping to complete that permit process with them right now. And then Caltrans really just had comments on the design, not the environmental impacts of the project, but had some comments about the, the design, and those were all addressed as part of the final design. You know, they had just some specific comments about making sure that the turning movements were how they'd like to see them. So those were the comments received. All, none of those comments required any changes to the initial study mitigated neg deck, and did not change our conclusions about environmental impacts or the recommended mitigation measures. Now you're wondering, why are we here two and a half years later? This was on the Planning Commission's agenda for March of 2020, so think back, what happened in March of 2020? So the COVID pandemic and COVID response really took over all of what was happening here with the town, and this was backburnered, and that's why we're here now. I will make the comment that there are no change in the existing conditions at the project site that would result in a new significant impact under CEQA. There's no changes in the laws, the document that was circulated is still valid, so what we're asking for the Planning Commission to consider tonight is making the determination that the CEQA has been complete, and recommending that the town council adopt the mitigation monitoring reporting program, and then mitigated negative declaration. So with that, are there any questions?
Does anybody have any questions?
I just have a question about some of the lane issues, but I don't know if that would necessarily be you who I would ask.
That might be Merrill.
This is a route I take all the time, so I'm very familiar with it, and I'm familiar with the backup of what happens. I'm very happy to see the extended lanes. One issue I do have is once you cross the railroad tracks, coming from Brace, going past Taylor, and you're heading past the railroad tracks there, on the left, you've got two lanes where I assume the right lane will merge into the left lane before you get to the vets place there, or Bankhead Road. Well, a lot of times, there's trucks, there's PG&E trucks, other, oh, I'm sorry, there's PG&E trucks and also trims, they have scaffolding things there. They stop and block that single lane a lot to make a left-hand turn into, I don't know if you can see that little building right there, there's a driveway. And I'm worried that, I'm worried that the, you're taking a right lane, going into left lane, and all of a sudden you're going to have trucks stopped right there. So I don't know how to mitigate that problem,
Yeah.
unless we can make the lane go past that driveway, so, or not allow left-hand turns there, because you're going to have two lanes there now, so maybe a left-hand turn wouldn't be allowed there, I don't know, but...
Yeah, I haven't considered this. I mean, I know there's a transition, like the extents.
Yeah, we can look at that. It may be beyond the limits of what we're doing, and there's a lot of eyes on this project in terms of oversight, and like Amy mentioned, the different, I mean, even Army Corps was looking at Taylor as being a historic route, and was wanting to know the, the boundaries of how far we were going, and it just, it may be that that lends itself to another effort that we can do, either through striping or widening some other project, but I can look at that.
I'm definitely just concerned about rear endings, you know, people stopping suddenly because there's a truck stop. Right now, the trucks that want to turn left, ten, there's kind of a little kind of yellow area that's kind of wide there, and if they pull over far enough, you can get around them, but again, it's just opening up for rear ending happening there, especially if we have two lanes going into one, and then all of a sudden you've got a truck stopped, and then that'll back up, it might back it, clear it to the, the railroad tracks even, you know?
Yeah, we can look at, I, we will have more work in the future at this intersection. There was originally a right turn lane southbound Sierra College onto Taylor. We met with the railroad, and, and the impacts for putting in that right lane were just too excessive. It would have had to widen the, the crossing gates and train preemption systems, and just the ripples went on and on, so we, we tabled that as a separate project, and so we can look at what you're describing when, when we move forward with that other effort.
Yeah, I know what you're talking about, because, because it's only a right turn only there right now, and you're going to make it to straight through, which is awesome.
Right.
We're very happy about that, but, because the single lane gets back past Bankhead even, you know, if the lights are off or something, so if that's a right-hand turn lane and a straight, seems like once we get past the railroad tracks, there might be enough room to make a, a little turn out that the people going right can actually go right while the ones going straight, you know? Do you understand what I'm trying to say?
I do, yeah, I'll look at, thank you.
Okay, that's just a thing, observation.
Did you have any questions?
Uh, I was just wondering, are the only improvements on Taylor Road are striping? Is that correct? Got some dark lines there, I think it's just striping, or not widening that I'm aware of.
No, it's not, Taylor Road stays, there's, there's striping, but that's basically it.
Striping there, yeah.
Yeah, we put in for an HCP grant, which we should hear back in February, it's a Highway Safety Improvement Program grant that would make raised median on Taylor and do some signals, not signal, I'm sorry, street lighting improvements, but that would be a separate project from this, if we got it, so.
So all the funds for this are already in place?
Yes.
I don't have any questions, do you? So, I guess?
So we'll need to open it up for the public hearing. Take any public comments that folks have closed that public hearing, they're bringing it back to the Commission for deliberation and action, and staff's recommendation is in the, in the packet, and if Planning Commissions were so inclined, you could just say, move, recommend it, staff, action to save yourself some air and some breaths.
Okay, so let's open up for public comment if anybody has any comments or questions. Do we have any on Zoom?
None.
None? Okay, well, then I guess I'm going to close public comment, and can I get a motion for this resolution?
Twenty-three oh one?
Twenty-three oh one.
I make a motion that we approve Resolution 2301 in accordance with the staff recommendation and the requirements included therein.
I second.
Let Ryan do it.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, I'll let you.
I second.
Commissioner DiMartini?
Aye.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Vice Chair London?
Yes.
So then we have, I think, the Planning Director Report?
Actually, we need to back up onto the agenda a little bit. We skipped over the temporary election of the Chair and Vice Chair.
So can you just explain that for the public, because I was a little confused about the, what we're doing here?
Sure, so Greg, as you know, is out of state, so we, that opens up the Chairperson's position, and we need to have all of those positions filled, and we have newcomers onto our Planning Commission, so tonight's a good night to have a temporary appointment of the Chairperson and the Vice Chairperson, and then when everybody is onboard in March again with the different Commissioners, we will again have that appointment of the Chair and Vice Chair.
Thank you. So shall we make nominations? So I nominate Mike, just to, to close out, to, as, serve as the Chair for the next, essentially, it's this and the next meeting?
Two meetings?
Two meetings and the beginning of the, the March meeting.
Anybody else?
If there's not a second, then the motion will die, and Mike will be after that.
I second.
All right. Vice Chair London?
Yes.
Commissioner DiMartini?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Hogan?
Do I, do I need to vote? Because I was going to say, I can abstain, so that's what I would, that's what I'll do, I will abstain.
Won't go on record. Okay, so then moving forward now, do we do the directors, why do we do?
You got a new chair, so you could let him?
Oh, yeah. You get a takeover.
Right now? How did we rehearse?
Okay.
You can do it from there, you don't need to...
Just hand him the gavel. Here. How about you just hand the gavel?
Just give me that.
That's all that matters, I guess.
So we find a spot on the agenda, we're relying heavily on Bonnie.
So we still need a Vice Chair.
Well, we have Bonnie. I mean, she's already the elected Vice Chair, so, are you trying to cut her short?
Yes.
Ouch! Does she keep her same position that she's already in?
Yeah.
If there was a motion in a second to do that, that'd be it.
If there was a motion in a second to do that, that'd be the cleanest way, since we have it on the agenda to elect a Chairman and a Vice Chairman.
Okay.
So, yeah.
As Chairman, I no longer make motions unless absolutely necessary, so.
Oh, so we have to make the motion?
Yeah, yeah, we have to work.
I have to work. I make a motion that Bonnie remain as Vice Chair till March, is that right? March? Okay?
Second.
Yes.
Roll call.
Commissioner Hogan?
Yes.
Commissioner DiMartini?
Yes.
Do you have to vote?
I'll vote, yes. Not shy.
And Sharon Hogan?
Yeah, I'll vote yes.
Yes, there we go.
Okay, so that's on the agenda.
It was, it's on the front page.
Oh, there, okay, fine. Now that's on the spot.
So which we skipped over that first, we did, we've done, um, Planning Directors' Report?
Yes. So just a brief update on where we are with some of our big projects. The general plan update, we've been receiving chapters on the administrative draft EIR for internal review from AECOM. Not all the chapters have been completed at this time, but as the chapters come in, we've been reviewing them, and we're looking for everything from typographical errors to items that might need more explanation, or, or things of that nature. A draft EIR is anticipated this spring, somewhere in the late March, early April timeframe, and then it will go out for a 45-day public review period, and we'll schedule a joint workshop with the Planning Commission and Town Council following that public release of the draft EIR. On the Hidden Grove project, we're going through, working through that application and the whole SB 330 process, so as you know, it's a housing project to be processed under SB 330, and it's located behind railies on the former, former village at Loomis site. The application was deemed complete in July and can be found on our website, and then once the town determines the application is complete, there is a 60-day period to determine if it's consistent with the general plan, so we're working through that process with the applicant right now. ECor has been retained by the town to prepare the CEQA document, which would be an EIR, and they are in the initial phase of completing surveys and data collection and getting that setting and background information together, prior to the actual analysis, which will take some months to complete. Under SB 330, the town has only allowed five pub, public hearings, and that information can be found, the SB 330 process information can be found on our website as well, to give you some more information on that. For Costco, so the final approvals went through the council in November, following the Planning Commission's determination on recommendations at the October 25th meeting. Costco is planning to break ground in February with anticipated opening date sometime in early fall. We've been working with them regarding various improvements that are... that are required for, from their mitigation monitoring program and, and other, the conditions of approval. So, great progress is being, being made there. Right-of-way was accepted by Town Council at the January 10th meeting to provide PG&E with land rights they need to proceed with the undergrounding. And Costco will be starting tree removal any day now. So, they hope to finish their grading and storm drain work by mid-March. And that will allow PG&E to complete the undergrounding with April, in an April start date and a June completion. So, again, we've been working on the conditions of approval with Costco staff and going through their pre-construction mitigation measures to make sure they are compliant. That includes concepts for the fruit label artwork along Sierra College Boulevard. So, after the Costco, after Costco will start on the road widening and the new signalized intersection improvements, and their hope is to start stocking the warehouse in early August for a September opening. And then, as, as we talked about tonight, the town is taking the lead on the Sierra College Boulevard widening project, which was recommended to continue on to the Town Council.
That's, that's all really exciting. I just have one question. I remember one of their mitigation measures was they needed to find, I think it was like seven acres of, was it oak?
Oakland? Woodland mitigation. And that, I, I don't have information on that at this time.
Thanks.
I did, I have talked to them about working with the, the Land Trust, Placer County Land Trust, and they're willing to do that. We've also talked about potentially tying up portions of the Hidden Grove site where the wetlands are, that they can't, where that, if that's in a, an area that would work for that. So, they, they're talking to those folks, too. Sorry to jump into your report.
So, on miscellaneous projects, we talked about the Loomis RV campground. We're just waiting on the applicant for more information on what he would, how he would like to proceed. On the Inland Surf project, that's a project that wasn't formally submitted, but the concept that they proposed was for a surf park with outdoor recreation, hotels, restaurants, wellness and fitness centers. And that would be located, located in the tourist destination commercial properties at I-80 and Horseshoe Bar Road. The applicant decided to go with a different location along Highway, Highway 65 instead of in Loomis. So, he has found another spot, and we don't have any applications or concepts for that property at this time. Miscellaneous odds and ends, we continue to have public counter hours Monday through Friday from 8:00 to noon. Town Manager Tuesdays are a quarterly format, held from 9:00 to 10:30 at the Train Depot, the fourth Tuesday of each fiscal quarter. So, the next meeting will be March 28th. Storm response, Public Works did an amazing job responded to, responding to the recent winter storms and all of the down vegetation and, and blocked storm drains. So, while there was some localized flooding and down trees, the impacts were actually relatively minor. Tree pruning efforts that have occurred in the past two years helped to maintain the health of those trees, and that helped to reduce the number of down limbs and, and damaged trees. And then our next Planning Commission regular meeting will be February 28th at 7:00 p.m. Right at the depot.
Yeah, it's Thursday? Yeah, it's Thursday, at the courtyard. So, firewood, and it's basically with it we've picked up throughout the past year or so during the tree pruning stuff, ready for people to get picked up.
When was that?
This Thursday.
Okay.
We're also being, we're also able to count it against our SB 30, 1383, is that right? Yeah, so the, the amount of stuff that we're supposed to take out of the landfill, we're able to count part of that against that. So, that's a good thing.
Okay. Well, I think now we're down to Commissioner reports. If any commissioners have any items they'd like to report on?
I have one. So, the Penrin-Horseshoe Bar MAC met this evening, which unfortunately, we weren't able to go to. But Placer County was doing a mobility and infill acceleration study. Essentially, they've identified five opportunity sites, and right on our border on Penrin would be one of them. So, they have a survey for residents to provide some feedback. They're looking for, you know, input such as housing option types. And then also, I think more importantly, for Loomis would be active mobility options, such as, you know, bike lanes and trails and walking paths and those sorts of things. Because as you've often noted, we haven't really grown a whole lot in the past 10 years, but everybody's coming through Loomis, and so our traffic is just, you know, terribly affected. So, that link is www.placermobilityandinfill.com. And so, encourage everyone to take that.
Is that "and" spelled out?
Yes. I can send it to you, too.
Okay. Thanks. Any other Commissioner reports or comments? With that, meeting's adjourned. Not as good as Greg. He had like a nine-minute meeting or something. I had the previous record, though.